We'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask that everyone stand for a moment of silence and then pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In the interest of making sure that we hear all of our public input tonight, we're going to make a little change to the agenda, and we're going to do public input at the end, and that way, all of our speakers have an ample opportunity to share their feelings with us. So, um, do we have any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Madam Superintendent?
The agenda was revised on April 3rd, 2024, to add item 9.03 and item 8.07, and on April the 4th, 2024, to add item 807 and remove item 9.03. A revised HR personnel list was added today to item 901, and the board has been provided a copy.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, uh, we have minutes from our March 25th, 2024 meeting? Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I do, I recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, March 25th, 2024.
So moved, second.
It has been moved and properly second, that we accept our minutes. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Mrs. Cullen, would you come and do the educational foundation report, please?
Good evening, Chairman, School Board Superintendent. Applemark has had 889 teacher visits to date, and we've distributed $137,900 through the stores. Um, top scholars, in the, uh, top 3% of their graduating class, we had 104 students. The ad with photos is in the April Style Magazine, and the foundation has purchased a gift for each of them that will be distributed to them at their award ceremonies. We have two more New World Reading Literacy Workshops this week, one at Grassy Lake, which is Bingo Night, and, um, that's Friday evening, and we have 96 registered to date. And then we have a family picnic on Saturday at Astatula, and we already have 133 registered, but they get Outback, so we're anticipating there'll be quite a few more. Um, we participated in the Amazing Race this past weekend. The foundation had a wheelchair obstacle course that included super soakers, and Take Stock in Children had a duck competition. We'll both be receiving funds from the event, and it's typically in the area of around $3,000. Ladies for Education, the golf tournament for women that do not play golf, is Friday, April the 19th. The event is sold out. Wharton Smith and DACG Inc., DAC, are the presenting sponsors. Uh, our retirement dinner is scheduled for May 22nd at the Venetian Center. Stepping Out for Education is July 26th and 27th. The female dancers are our own principal, beloved principal at Eustace Heights Elementary, Terry Seuss, um, Jessica Gianni from GSB Construction, and, um, Lilia Liest Delon, who is a healthcare worker out of Mount Dora. And our men are Michael Martin with the Sheriff's Department, and Dr. Mayan Hussein from Florida Cancer Specialist. Uh, we did lose our third male dancer today. He had a back injury, and we haven't started practice yet. Um, so we'll be replacing him in the next day or two. Um, scholarship applications, uh, have been judged, and we will be awarding them at the award ceremonies this month and next. The foundation April board meeting will be replaced with a tour of the structured classrooms that we funded at Lake Hills with the $419,000 grant we received from the state. Um, and that will be at 10:15 versus our regular noon. And then the foundation strategic plan is going to be held on May 15th from 11:00 to 3:00, and, um, Ms. Challenger has advertised those as changes. Um, take stock interviews for scholarship recipients were completed today, and we will be bringing in 32 students, and the board will be voting on the awards on the 18th, and the students notified on the 26th of this month. Senior graduation luncheon is April the 23rd at Venetian honoring our 28 Take Stock in Children 2024 graduates. And our mentor appreciation gala for Take Stock is May the 23rd, and that's sponsored by Mercy Labs. Are there any questions?
Great work.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
We will now have our attorneys report, Mr. Cole.
Uh, nothing to report.
Thank you. Consent agenda, Superintendent?
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.05.
So moved, second.
It has been moved by Mr. Dodd and second by Mr. Mathias, that those items be approved. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, 5-0.
And before we continue on, I would just want to acknowledge the, the team here from Mascot Charter School here this evening. You just approved the addendum to their, um, charter application, so, or their continuation of their charter. So, um, thank you for your partnership and all you do for our students, and it's nice having you here tonight, so thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, discussion agenda, Mr. Cole?
Yes ma'am, we have a public hearing to, uh, for tentative approval of Policy 5136, Wireless Communications Devices, and Policy 5610, Removal Suspensions, Alternative Disciplinary Placement, and Expulsion of Students. We will now open this matter for public hearing. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Having heard that, oh, it's tentative, okay, we move on to the next item?
Um, I will recommend tentative approval of the policy.
So moved.
Second, it has been moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mrs. Luke. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign of aye.
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 5-0 unanimous. Next item?
Next item is, uh, a request by Molly Cunningham, School Board Member District 4, and Chair to attend the SF, FSBA Annual Summer Conference, June 5th to 7th, 2024, at the Grand Hyatt in Tampa Bay.
I, I would make a motion that we approve the travel.
I second it.
It has been motioned by Mrs. Luke and second by Mr. Mathias. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, 5-0. Mr. Cole?
Yes, next item, 11.03, is a request by Tyler Brandenburg, School Board Member District 2, to attend the FSBA Annual Summer Conference, June 5th to 7th, 2024, at the Grand Hyatt Tampa, Florida.
I'll make a motion that we approve Mr. Brandenburg's travel.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
5-0 unanimous. Okay, at this point, we're going to have our public input. Uh, prior to doing that, I'd like, just for clarification, to read a statement. As many of you know, the Florida Department of Education and the Florida State Board of Education settled a federal lawsuit filed in the Northern District of Florida challenging the constitutionality of the Parents' Right in Education Act. The Act prohibits classroom instruction on sexual orientation or gender identification in kindergarten through 8th grade, and any instruction in grades 3 to 12 that is not age-appropriate or developmentally appropriate and aligned to Florida state standards. The Lake County School District was not a party to that lawsuit and did not participate in the settlement discussions. The settlement agreement outlines the parties agreed upon interpretation of what activities are allowed and which are prohibited by the Parents' Right, by the Parental Rights Act. The settlement did not change the law, as only the legislature can do that. One of our duties as constitutional officers is to follow the law established by the legislature. When the Act was originally passed, we adopted policies to comply with the law. Because the law has not changed as a result of the settlement, we will not amend those policies or take any action in response to the settlement. However, we will continue to be vigilant in assuring that every teacher, employee, and student adheres to the law and all adopted school board policies. If any member of the community is unhappy with the law as it is written, we encourage you to contact your state legislatures, as only the legislature can change the law. Okay? So, public input, Ms. Kim Cronin.
Good evening, School Board Members, Superintendent. So tonight, I'm here really just to discuss employees and the morale of employees right now. I haven't seen morale this low in a number of years. Um, we conducted a survey just before spring break, um, just asking for concerns. And of course, everybody's concern was money, right? Um, money and the lack of experience pay. But the other thing that was surprising is, well, I don't know how surprising maybe, um, is student behavior. So our bus drivers and our TAs are overwhelmed with student behavior. I, yeah, understand we want to try and keep students in school, we're doing what we can, but, you know, bus drivers need the support of administrators when kids are being bad on the bus. Um, right now, we've got, you know, double and triple loads of kids on a bus, so makes things a little bit more difficult to start off. And then when you've got bad behavior and it's not being addressed, it makes it more difficult on bus drivers. We've actually had a few new bus drivers that have walked away after they drove a bus. Um, so I think it would be in the best interest to look at student behavior, and, you know, we keep talking about parental rights, um, and I think maybe we need to talk a little bit more about parent responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tricia Nicholson?
Welcome.
Good evening, uh, my name is Tricia Nicholson. I'm a resident of Eustace. Uh, I'm a small business owner and a proud ally and board member, Director of Operations of Lake County Pride. I have lived in the area for 18 years with my husband and two kids. I have a daughter who graduated high school in, uh, 2022, and my son will be entering high school next year. All of their schooling in Eustace. I'm here to today express my concerns with Resolution 24-02. For so long now, the Republican Party have carried themselves on the idea of small government, allowing families and people to be free of their lives, living peacefully without interference and nitpicking oversight. But they do not grant these ideas to the people they do not understand or disagree with in some way, as if they were less than. I believe the wording in this resolution to be vague and up for interpretation. As it says in the resolution, "Wanting no visible representation on school properties that promote sexual identity or gender ideologies." I would like to know what they specifically think is sexual identity and gender ideologies. Does this include people outside of the LGBTQIA+ community whom this is aimed at? People whose identities fall in line with their biological sex and social norms, like heterosexuals? That's a straight cisgendered person's sexual identity, by the way, heterosexuality. Does this mean that teachers that are married, uh, in straight relationships also cannot display pictures of themselves with their spouses? Because I believe that shows gender ideology. Also wanting teachers not to speak on related topics makes it hard on students to properly express themselves and to be able to build strong trusting relationships with their teachers and administration. Don't we want that for our children, to be able to have adults in their life that they can trust and confide in if and when the time comes? To the topic of maintaining a safe and proper learning environment, students must dress appropriately and in a manner consistent with their biological sex. Since some Republicans want to be traditionalists, does this mean that men and boys should start dressing like our founding fathers did? Wearing tights, heels, long dress-like jackets and attire, wigs and even makeup? That's what all things men used to wear on a regular basis. Are we going to start telling women and young girls that they can no longer wear pants? What about those, like my daughter, that are uncomfortable wearing dresses and skirts? Are we going to tell boys and men of Scottish descent that they can no longer wear a kilt because it's too feminine? Are we going to start telling women and girls that they don't, that don't like having hair in their face and with short hairstyles, that they must grow it out whenever, whether they like it or not? Are we going to tell men and boys like my son that they can't have hair past their ears and that they must wear it short, even if they don't like having a short haircut?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Kendrick?
Good evening. Thank you all. I'm Patty Kendrick from Fruitland Park. Uh, I'm a little confused now as to whether we're supposed to talk on this subject, the, um, 2402. I came here today to request that it be put on the agenda to discuss it. That's all I came here for today. And I'm not sure with what you said, it sounded like we are not going to really discuss it here? Like, we need to-
No ma'am, it's not an agenda item in-
Right.
-the meeting, we only speak to things that are on the agenda.
Exactly, so are we going to be able to put it on the agenda for another meeting?
No ma'am.
Right, it sounded like what you said, we need to address it with legislators.
Yes ma'am.
So, that's-
But we appreciate you showing up.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Glenn Strauss? I'm sorry, Mrs.?
I would like it on the record that I am speaking as a concerned citizen and not as an employee of Lake County Schools. So I'm Dr. Glenn Strauss. I'm an advocate for the prevention of child maltreatment, a behavior analyst and educator, a board member of Lake County Pride, and a visible transgender woman. I'm a scientist trained in analysis and use of data. As an ESC teacher and behavior interventionist, I understand the field of education makes data-driven decisions, especially when it concerns the welfare of our students. The Lake County School Board has been asked to adopt Resolution 2402, and it sounds like you guys already have, because we're not making any changes, which has been proposed by Lake County Republicans. This resolution falsely accuses the LGBTQIA+ community of having an agenda to initiate sexually inappropriate discussions and activities in the classroom. I would argue the data suggests that conservative politicians and those employed in the religion industry are more likely to be sexually inappropriate with our children. I invite you to consider the following. Data was collected across the past year on arrests for sexual assault on a child in each state. Raw data and analysis is available for personal review at whoismakingnews.com. There is evidence to suggest that conservative and religious organizations are projecting their own sexualization of children onto the LGBTQIA+ community, specifically targeting transgender men and women. The facts of the data does not support their narrative. A child is 805.12 times more likely to be sexually assaulted by an ordained member of the clergy than a transgender person. Of the offenders in the data, 463 offenders were ordained. If you add those also just working or volunteering in the religious industry, that number increases to 694. A child is 150.57 times more likely to be sexually assaulted by a politician than a transgender person. Of the offenders who were politicians, 73.3 identified as Republican, 10.7 as Democratic, 2.7% as Libertarian, and 13.3% were unaffiliated. In full transparency, yes, there were four transgender people and one dry cleaning queen included in the data. That being said, the chances of a child being sexually assaulted by a transgender person per capita is .00000096, otherwise highly unlikely. In conclusion, our students are safer with transgender people than they are with conservative politicians and those who work in the religious sector. I would invite Anthony Sabatini and John Labriola to address the flaws in their ideology before trying to implicate innocent and marginalized people for their own political gain. Vote. Don't let politicians and affiliated groups exploit LGBTQIA+ students and staff.
Thank you, Dr. Strauss. Uh, I'm going to ask that we hold our applause, please. Thank you. Erin, I'm afraid to attempt your last name, I don't want to mispronounce-
Erin LaRiviere.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, my name is Erin LaRiviere. I'm a mom and a grandmother here in Lake County. I'm a nervous first-time speaker. Um, I've made Lake County and the Golden Triangle area my home for 30 years. I have three children I've put through Lake County Schools, one of whom graduated with Mr. Sabatini. Um, my youngest child is senior this year at Taverri's High School. She is kind, she's caring, she's very artistic, she's talented. She plays musical instruments, many more than I can count. She won the state solo ensemble, I don't know all the terms, distinguished- She's going to Ohio next week to represent Lake County RPT in the WGI World Championship Competition. Very nice kid, I'm so proud of her. She is also transgender. And I say also because that's only one small part of the wonderful person that she is. Resolution 2402. Mr. Sabatini and Mr. Labriola have a long history of hateful stunts that everyone's familiar with. We must ask why. Why are they pushing this issue in Lake County that has failed in the Senate? Why do they continue to target our kids, our LGBTQ community? Could it be that somebody's running for Congress this year? I think we all know the answer. No parent should have to worry every single day that their child may be harmed or hurt due to people that want power pushing this hate into our community. A flag or a sticker doesn't indoctrinate your child or anyone's child. It shows all students that the person is caring and accepting of all students. Lake County Schools need many, many things. We're overcrowded, we're bursting at the seams. Taverri's High School can't even accommodate the whole band on the stage. This is not one of them. I urge you, if it does come up again, to please vote no and reject this attempt to use our kids as political pawns for someone who's running for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Care? Gail? I'm sorry, what's your last name?
I was waiting for you to say your last name.
Is it Care?
Carlinz.
Carl.
Carlinz.
Carlin, okay.
Good evening, School Board Members and Superintendent, and, uh, I'm here in support of Resolution, uh, 2402. I think it's something that, uh, is not appropriate for children to be talking about sexuality or talking about kindergarten through 8th grade students. That's something that can be left to the parents, whatever, you know, parents decide, but I don't think it's anything that's appropriate to be presented in school. And so I believe that, uh, these loopholes that are there do need to be tightened up. So I just keep it short and sweet, and I just support that resolution. Should it come up, uh, be put on the agenda in the future.
Thank you. Connie? And if you would, please, tell us your last name.
My name is Connie Horvath. I have to say, I'm a little bit shocked that you chose to sidestep without discussing, and yet every single one of these people have prepared remarks that last two to three-minute mark almost precisely. To me, it speaks of too much coincidence. So excuse me for pointing your finger that way, but when I was born and raised, and pedophilia, anything even remotely related was against the law, and quite frankly, uh, we would never allow a person that had those tendencies to teach children who are very, um, they're, what's the word? They're very innocent, and they are easily manipulated, and they are easily deceived. And when you have someone that is, uh, playing to the system like they are not something that they, uh, that we would not accept as a standard for teaching the children that are actually withholding that information and teaching, I see that as deception and manipulation, and frankly, with children, that is, that is objectionable. And I'm not saying these people can't have their lives or do whatever they want to do. I'm all for that. What I am against, however, is manipulating children that have no earthly idea of what is going on in their lives. And for that reason, I would hope that you would reconsider this, put it back on the agenda. Uh, apparently, we didn't do as good a job of notifying our membership as you did. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Rick Carlinis?
Well hello, my name is Rick Carlinz, and I am here to ask you to, you know, put this on the agenda, the item. Um, I'm, uh, you know, I don't know exactly the authority that the school board has, but I'm sure that you have some authorities over the content and what goes on in the schools and the programs after the schools. And the bill that was most recently passed, a settlement, it, it, there's loopholes that are in it where there can be explicit readings, cross-dressing, uh, you know, and it just leaves the door open for a lot. And, you know, the, the, uh, the sexual anything and, and gender identity and all this wasn't even a discussion, and I mean, I think it was 2015, wasn't it? Where a man was still married to a woman, that that was the way that it is. And we've lived by these principles, uh, I guess for 5,000 years, you know, of, of history. It's biblical principles, and we're abandoning our moral basis. There is an absolute truth, there is, and you will be blessed if you live by it. And when we start deciding what it is that we are in our own right and demanding other people go along with that and honor that, no matter how harmful it might be, the children don't have a chance to see. They're not taught patriotic civics, you know? I mean, we have to fight for that kind of a thing. Pride in the nation. And, you know, in, in, there's, there's states where, you know, a parent has no say. If a child wants to trans, to mutilate their bodies, that the parent has no say, they can't get involved in that, and if they do, they're, they're prosecuted, uh, you know, with a crime and punished for that. A, a child cannot run their own lives. They're supposed to be taught, and they're supposed to be taught by their parents. I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm older, and, you know, I just remember a time, I just think, when there's, there's a mother and a father and there's children. And I mean, you just had that family structure, and there was like, you know, things, sayings like "Sticks and stones'll break my bones," but "Names will never hurt me." You know, and it's just, if you want something, you work for it justly and you acquire it. Uh, you know, I, you have some authority, you know? Whoever it's below the, the upper authority and the legislatures and so forth, if it's bad law, we are not, we, it's our duty, if we have a moral basis, if we know the difference between right and wrong, it's our duty to do the best that we can to stand against that. And so really, I'm asking the board that this, all this sexual anything needs to be out of the schools. Totally. It's got no place there, you know? It just has no place there at all. It's, it's just snowballing, you know? It's a fad, it's a very dangerous, evil fad. Uh, and it, it needs to be squelched. We have to do this. Nobody's going to do it for us, it's going to get worse. It's progressed downhill. It's happened here in what's called the Free, you know, State of Florida. You know, I mean, freedom doesn't mean anything that anybody wants. I mean, heroin addicts, you know, they're not free to just go out and lock somebody down just so they can buy heroin. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, please, let's be polite. Mr. Vale, Tom Vale?
Hello, my name is Tom Vale. I'm First Vice Chair of the Lake County Republican Executive Committee, and I just wanted to-
And I just wanted to clear up a little bit on the origin of a couple of things because there's, uh, I think a misunderstanding. we sent a letter to all of you on the board in January about the Lifewise Academy. And I've spoken to Mr. Mathias about this. This originated directly from me, nothing to do with anybody's campaign. It's strictly the values of the Republican Executive Committee, the members. This resolution that we're talking about tonight, this is the original resolution that I submitted to the board and to the body. Nothing to do with my campaign or Anthony Sabatini's campaign. It was based on a request from the Christian Coalition of, uh, Christian Family Coalition. They came to me, asked me to submit this. I did that at their request. It was approved by the board and the members. So this has nothing to do with Anthony Sabatini's campaign. It was not originated from him. It was originated outside organization. I brought it in. That's all I wanted to say. Shall I leave copies with you?
If you'd like to leave them, you can give them to Mrs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Leon, is it Leon Cousins? L-E-A-H? No, last name Cousins? Jen.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen Cousins and I'm Chair of Glisten Central Florida. I'd like to put on record that I support the wise and correct decision that the school board has made tonight regarding Resolution 20-02 from John Labriola of the Christian Family Coalition and Anthony Sabatini of Lake County Republicans. That being said, I'd like to pinpoint how this resolution violates constitutional and state law should it ever advance again. It states, "No school teacher or administrator within the district may erect or display a flag, sticker, or other representation on school property that promotes sexual identity or gender ideology." This violates the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and is viewpoint and content-based discrimination. This appears to be based on a failed bill that died in the Florida Legislature earlier this year and was even denounced by Republican President of the Senate Kathleen Pasodomo. The school district cannot ban only flags communicating messages with which it disagrees with without directly violating the First Amendment. It states, "Teachers must also avoid classroom discussions and reading assignments that promote these topics. The so-called Parental Rights in Education Law does not prohibit discussion, only instruction." Both the text of the statute itself as well as the state settlement agreement on the issue make that point crystal clear. This board cannot censor both teachers and students and infringe upon their free speech this way, nor can you enact a policy with vague terms like "promote" without providing a clear definition. It also states, "To maintain a safe and proper learning environment, students must dress appropriately and in a manner consistent with their biological sex." This is not only an absurd notion, but it directly and blatantly violates parents' due process rights under the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, the Parental Bill of Rights under state law, First Amendment rights to freedom of expression to all students, and the Equal Protection Clause of the Constitution's prohibition on discrimination on the basis of sex and sex stereotypes. It directly contravenes the rights of students by imposing discrimination based on sex stereotypes and mandating compliance with the state's notion of what are boys' clothes and girls' clothes. There is no more clear example of government overreach than directly reaching into the living rooms of families in Lake County and dictating to parents what their children can wear to school. This would also violate Title IX of the Education Amendments Act and would put federal funding at risk for the school district. It also says, "Written permission from a parent or guardian shall be required for all student participation in clubs and activities," which is a moot point and only included to fearmonger because last year, if people had paid attention, the state BOE passed a rule that made this a requirement statewide. As you can clearly see, not only is it embarrassing that a former state legislator would introduce such a legally flawed resolution, but should you, as the board, whatever, adopt it, you'd put yourselves in violation of several federal laws that could jeopardize funding for Lake County, Lake County Public Schools and would put the Lake County School Board at risk of lawsuits based on the myriad constitutional rights of students and parents that it would infringe upon without a reasonable justification. I urge you all of this, I urge all of you to vote this down should it ever come to you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Olivani?
Again, just in case this is heard again, um, I'd like to read what I have written. Hello, my name is Danielle Olivani and I am the president and founder of Lake County Pride. The LGBTQIA+ community has come together with allies and supporters to say enough is enough. We vehemently oppose the proposed resolution by the Lake County Republican Party that aims to ban all forms of LGBTQIA indoctrination, pride flags, symbols, et cetera, from schools. This resolution is an attack on the core principles of equality, inclusivity, and freedom and a direct assault on the fundamental human rights of our LGBTQIA students, faculty, and community members. By uttering and erasing us, our identities and symbols from educational institutions, we normalize and precipitate discrimination, hatred, and exclusion. Let me be clear. Our students deserve to be themselves, to express themselves freely, and to feel safe and accepted in their schools, and we will settle for nothing less. This resolution violates their constitutional rights, including the freedom of expression and equal legal protection under the law. This is unacceptable. The time is now for Lake County School Board to prioritize learning and thriving above all else for all students. Lake County schools must be an inclusive, welcoming environment. They need to be places where every child feels valued, respected, supported, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender ideology, or any other characteristic. We believe diversity should be celebrated and inclusivity should be embraced in all forms. The board must stand in solidarity with us in the future to create a school environment where everyone could thrive and succeed. We, again, it's been said, but we refuse to be used as pawns to score political points any further with total disregard to what type of things that these kind of resolutions and laws, uh, the lack of protections and loss of support are doing to the mental health and well-being of our LGBTQIA students. This is unacceptable. The fearmongering and the misinformation must stop. We will not back down if this resolution is ever brought forth again, if it's ever considered. We demand to be included in any and all further discussions regarding our community from this point forward. Our LGBTQIA+ students, staff, and community, community members deserve no less than full support and acceptance from the Lake County School Board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Laura Campbell?
She's a little shorter, okay. Hi, I'm Laura Campbell. I'm a resident of Taverries and I'm also born and bred Floridian, who was born at Naval Air Station Jacksonville. And I'm here to talk to you about something near and dear to my heart, and that is Resolution 2402. You see, as a mom of two amazing adult kids who identify as LGBTQIA+, I've made it my mission to spread understanding and support for the LGBTQIA+ community. You see, when a person takes on the responsibility of having a child, they have to raise the child that they have and not the child that they had in their mind or the child that they wanted. You raised the child you were given. So when my eighteen-year-old told us that they were transgender, it came down to our, us accepting our new child's identity or us burying the child that I gave birth to. Sorry. I would think a school board or even a county as a whole would be about protecting all of the children that they are entrusted with, not just the children that they like or the children that fit into their personal mold of their religious beliefs. Parental rights does not only apply to parents of cisgender children and children that do not identify as LGBTQIA+. I want to remind everybody that if you're actually going by the Bible, then remember that if you're sitting in here wearing mixed fabrics, that is actually a sin in the Bible. I want to make sure that everyone understands that twenty-four, that Resolution 24.02 urging local school boards to close loopholes, um, that violates laws, violates federal laws, which is far more important than just state laws, to risk losing all of the federal funding for violating Title IX and violating the First Amendment rights of the students seems counterproductive to all the students put in the county schools. There are two ways for these ideologies to be taught to children, and that would be those children being placed in public schools where their parents' religious beliefs can be taught. However, personalizing your entire county's education to the Christians is very counterproductive. I am quite sure, I'm not quite sure why you have decided that my children that were born in the United States of America, to my husband that was in air force, was in the United States Air Force, and the daughter of a Master Chief Petty Officer that served twenty-two years in the Navy, that my children do not deserve the same rights as your children. I urge you, if this comes forward in the, in the future, to decide to protect all of the residents within your county and not just the ones that you deem worthy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cassandra Brown? Ms. Brown? Okay, thank you. Sorry. Marzano? What's your first name? Leah, okay. L-E-A-H. Okay, thank you.
I am a, uh, senior at Taverries High School currently. I will be graduating in May. Um, I've been there since sophomore year. Um, and I can say with full confidence, ever since, I mean, as soon as I can remember in school, third grade, that all of these supposed legal loopholes and gender teaching and any teaching in relation to gender or sexual orientation does not exist within schools. Teachers do not teach about sex, whether it be between a man and a woman or a man and a man. They don't talk about it at all. They don't teach us anything in regards to that. The only thing that we're, that I notice being taught is all the kids being taught to ostracize the people who are different than that, the people like me. I have had several, several fellow students, peers of mine, who come just from their own homes crying because they've been forced to be something they aren't. A kid that I know very well, who's in the guard this year, who goes by the name of Venus, was forced to cut their hair so as to stop being punished. They'd spent years growing up. They loved their hair. They loved how it made them look, it made them feel because they felt like themselves. And that's all they wanted to be. The supposed legal loopholes that prior people have, it's simply a joke. Then that's all this resolution really is.
Thank you. Vance Yoakam?
Vance Yoakam, Taverries. First of all, I think that the board made a good decision here since, uh, after I had some discussions, you don't, uh, really have any authority to do anything about this. It's, uh, the state and the people ought to talk to the state. And, uh, I'm an active Republican, but I kind of think there was a mistake here to send this to you when it clearly appears to be a state issue that needs to be addressed. So after thinking about that, I think that, I mean, a lot of people are fearful about a lot of things, the kids being told, taught one thing or another. My experience in coming to these board meetings for the last eighteen years, uh, is that, especially in the last few years, is that you guys have all provided good direction for, uh, kids and, uh, taken, uh, heat for a lot of different issues from both sides. And, uh, I appreciate, uh, your interactions, uh, with the public. Uh, and the finally is that we seem worried now about the teachers or maybe the books in the schools, but TikTok is probably a hundred times worse. And that, if anything, you're going to have, uh, a resolution on would be to get rid of TikTok, you know, ban it from the U.S. And that's what I would focus on. So there's your, there's your charge to go ahead and seek legislation priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Yoakam. And that concludes our public input. Madam Superintendent, your report.
All right. Well, since our last meeting, we had several letters of condolence that were sent. First of all, to the family of Julie Tucker, Principal Grass Lake Elementary. She lost her grandmother, Cleta Tucker. Also, to the family of Rebecca Spencer, ELC Site Coordinator at Triangle Elementary, who lost her husband, Randall Spencer. And also to Sharon Rogers and her family. She's a program specialist in our ESE department. Um, and the loss of her brother, Kenneth Ray Inlow Jr. And also to the family of Lori Carroll, a school counselor at the villages of Lady Lake Elementary, and the loss of her father, James Jim Boleck. Um, also, since our last meeting, I have sent out a few letters of thanks to some of our outstanding business partners. And we have so many that I've been writing a lot of letters. Uh, first of all, to Lucas Air Conditioning and Heating Quality Filters and Pumps LLC and Kiwanis of Yum-Tilla for their support of the recent Rocket Day at Yum-Till Elementary School. They provided funding to purchase all of the materials. And as you know, those are quite fancy rockets and took a lot of material. Um, and they also purchased T-shirts for all of the fifth graders. So thank you to them. And also to Michael Rich, owner of Harbor Hills Development in Lady Lake. He gave a check in the amount of $10,750 to Lake Hills School. And Lisa Humphries in the Father's House in Leesburg for their ongoing support of Leesburg Elementary and other Leesburg schools. They've been providing school supplies, faculty appreciation events, and volunteers for various school events, including their annual beautification event. So thank you to those businesses. And also, I just want to extend my congratulations to Principal Marlene Strawn of, of Mount Dora High School. As you know, she has been selected as one of the three finalists for Principal of the Year for the State of Florida. So we look forward to hopefully finding out who the winner is very soon. And just a reminder to the board, or to let you know, that upcoming, we have our college and career expos. It's going to be a huge event. There are two of them. Thursday, April the 11th is going to be at the Claremont Arts and Recreation Center. And the second one is going to be Monday, April the 15th at the Venetian Center. Um, I'll have to get you the times on those, but they're during the day. And all of our students, juniors and seniors, I believe, will have an opportunity to attend the expo near their school and, um, learn about, um, all of the available careers here in Lake County that they could possibly consider, as they can also consider, um, maybe a career and technical education program within that, um, career cluster. So there's just a few announcements and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. It's now time for board member comments. Mr. Mathias?
I'll be quick, maybe quick. I was sitting here listening to the comments and for twelve years I've served this board. And we have over forty-three thousand kids and each kid deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. I also will say, we have five, over five thousand employees. They all deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Our teachers have a tough job. Not everyone comes from a perfect family. So teachers, um, sometimes are parents, sometimes they're the person that feeds, gets clothes. Let's respect our teachers and our administrators and the hard work they're doing in the schools every day. I think with that, maybe that's enough.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Luke?
I appreciate it. And I was thinking very similarly, just in regards to our, our teachers and what they're teaching and how they're teaching. And I can guarantee you that there is so much accountability that they are working on with our children and the standards that we teach. And it is something I am also very passionate about because I hear often what we're teaching and what we're pushing in schools. And when I can tell you that our teachers are some of the most passionate people I've ever met about the subject area in which they teach. And they've got so many standards and so much accountability with the testing and to ensure that our students know how to read, write, think, and talk, that, um, we, it was very well said. I did want to ask, um, Mrs. Carney made a comment about the bus, the bussing system, the bussing situation, and I couldn't help but think about some behaviors that we're dealing with too in regards to parenting. I would really, I wondered if we couldn't consider some of the similar changes that we made to, um, our policy on removal from the classroom in regards to bussing as well. So I know and I hear that we are trying to support teachers and behaviors in classrooms. And I'm wondering if we couldn't support our bus drivers the way that we're supporting our teachers. And I know that's been a vision. And so I just was thinking, when you were speaking about some of the things we put in place that I'm thankful for, that we might consider doing that in addition to our buses because those are- because those are extensions of the classroom.
Absolutely, and as soon as she was done speaking, I sent an email. We have a principal's meeting on Thursday, and I'd love for Mr. Fender and others to come, and let's just problem solve around that issue because I know there's frustration on both sides, and I think it would be a great conversation to see what we need to do to support our drivers. So, we'll, we'll hopefully be able to resolve that this week, or at least begin the conversation about how to better enforce those policies. So, absolutely.
Particularly thankful for the approach from both of the parties that were interested tonight about the parental involvement and approach, and so I think if we can put them beside us in the classroom and on the buses, that would be beneficial for all of our students. And then, I wanted to say thank you to Kiana Peterson and Jamie West. I got to attend a session that they put together for lesson planning for anybody that's in the, in the classroom, so substitute teachers, teachers assistants that are covering classrooms. And so, we had a really good, well-attended event that last Thursday evening, it's after hours, I think they do get some credit for it, but we had a really good time talking about how to plan lessons, and, and they gave me an opportunity to promote the program at Lake Sumter as well. And with that being said, I wanted to thank the Advisory Board Committee members, so I have quite a few representatives from Sumter County and Lake County that are helping kind of shape the direction of the teaching program at Lake Sumter State, and I wanted to thank you for your time and the committee members for their time. I know, I don't see Dr. Scott, but her and some of our principals and our teachers and our teaching academy were invited, and they all came, and they all gave great, just great input into decision-making that's happening. So, thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. Mr. Dodd?
Yes, I'd also like to offer my congratulations to Marlene Strawn. When I heard the news from the superintendent, my reaction was amazing, but not surprised, though. I fully expected her to be one of the finalists from the very beginning, superstar, and what's, what's really amazing is that she's not alone. We've got so many superstars here in Lake County, so it's, it's really wonderful to see just the depth of talent we've got here. That being said, I'm also thankful, speaking of the, the planning realm, about the number of teachers in schools today that plan different events surrounding the eclipse. I know I had signed permission slips for my own kids to get a chance to participate in some viewing activities, and, you know, when stuff like that occurs during the school day, it's, okay, it may not be necessarily aligned perfectly to whatever standard they're learning in class, but, you know, it's, it's still pretty cool and a great experience that maybe you only see every couple of decades, so, so I'm thankful to all the schools and teachers that got the kids out to take part in that today.
Mr. Brandimere?
Yeah, thank you for all those previous comments. Thank you to everyone for showing up tonight and giving public comment. What I would say on that is, again, right, right, what Chair Cunningham had said, that we have and we will continue to follow the law. And I can assure you that I will always spend taxpayer dollars wisely and always do what's best for kids, and I think we've done that here tonight, and we'll continue to do that moving forward. A lot of praise I want to give tonight. First is Scott Fender, who oversees the Transportation Department. I got a call from a great-grandfather a couple of weeks ago with an issue around his granddaughter, or great-granddaughter, being picked up near the bus stop, near their house, and the ability for the great-grandmother to go meet the child at the bus. Scott Fender and his team, when route management got on that swiftly, resolved that issue quickly to get that family what they needed for their individual care. Secondly, Church of the Lakes operates at Leesburg High School on the weekends and held their annual campus cleanup last Saturday. Crews came in, took out old palm trees, cleaned up trash, cleaned up debris, and overall beautified the campus. Church of the Lakes and Pastor Mike Matheny have donated over $400,000 to Leesburg High School over the last four years and continue to be an incredible partner of ours. One to echo the comments on Marlene, and I want us all to realize too that we currently have the reigning Principal of the Year for the State of Florida, Brent Fraser, Yumitilla High School, and the fact that back-to-back years, Lake County Schools has won the three finalists for Florida Teacher, Florida Principal of the Year is truly outstanding, a testament to our leadership team and a testament to the teachers and staff at Lake County Schools. And last, but certainly not least, we sat through a workshop this morning from 3:00 to about 5:30 with, with Ollie and the procurement team going over the construction manager for the Villages Elementary of Lady Lake, and had those scores tabulated by the end of that workshop. The CM knows who has awarded that job, and they can start working and working with the, the architect team quickly to continue to get that job operated on time and under budget, hopefully under budget. But again, a lot of praise, a lot to be proud of in Lake County, and thankful for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
I've had the pleasure of being associated with Lake County Schools for over 40 years. That's four decades. That's a long time. And what I've come to realize is that there are some genuinely good people, and a lot of them show up to classrooms every day, and they work very hard to ensure that all students are treated well and know that they're valuable. I can also share with you that the people sitting up here on this dais with me are among those people. It is our goal always to do what is right and appropriate for all of our students. We certainly do appreciate everyone who came out tonight to share your opinions. We don't take that lightly, but just know that you can go home knowing that we're always going to make the decision that we feel is in the best interest of the students, and our employees are always going to be held to a higher standard, and that you can count on. So, with that said, we thank you for coming out tonight. The meeting is adjourned.